There's a couple of minutes to go, I think that's close enough. Everybody there is going to get here. I'd like to welcome everybody to our meeting, month of meeting. Joel Cobb, YG.
Here.
And Alvin.
Here.
Laura Tyes.
Here.
Terrence Henry. Roger, would you lead us in pledge, we lead it, send it. Sleet?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's right. Father, we thank you, Lord, for another beautiful day you have given us, and we thank you for this life and freedom we have in our state, in our county, and, Lord, we ask that you look in, lay on the sick and the aged around by us, oh, there's so many, we can't call their names, but you know each need, and we lift these up to you at this time as we go into our business meeting, Lord, we pray that you would lead and guide us, and the decisions made here will be acceptable unto you, in Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Amen. We got Cameron Clark from Alabama Department of Revenue that's going to give us a little breakdown on sales tax collection, and if you could look up here and...
Sure. Okay.
I've got Wade.
I'm Senator Cameron Clark from the Alabama Department of Revenue. I'm the local tax liaison for the Alabama Department of Revenue in sales and use tax. What that is, is I'm an auditor, but sometimes as a salesman. We come talking about sales and use tax administration. So, a lot of people don't realize that Alabama, that cities and counties can either be state-administered, self-administered, or then contracted with a third-party company. And what I do is try to explain the benefits of what state administration is if you're partnering with the state. On this first page, okay, so, administration means we control the website that everyone files and pays to. Does anybody have a business that pays sales tax? So, you're familiar with the Alabama taxes one spot? Is it that difficult to use?
I have to strike thirty thousand.
Okay, okay, that's good. You know, everybody in the state, through COVID, since our offices were shut down, people used to come in and pay, but now they don't come in to pay, we've got everybody paying electronically. So, with that is the auditing. Auditing is where we're doing queries, or we'll find a project, or we'll find out some information, and we'll do auditing based on, we try not to go completely random because you don't want to waste the taxpayers' dollars sending out auditors for nothing. So, audits usually get audits, and with state administration, you don't have to worry about the audits. We'll take your advice if, for instance, your clerk or your administrator is looking at her reports and notices someone isn't paying, she can call the local taxpayer office, and we look into it. It doesn't cost extra. That's one of the bigger benefits of the state administration. Collections, we have collections agents, we have nine different taxpayer service centers around the state. Cleveland County is out of the Gadsden district, and there's even a satellite office in Madison. So, you know, we have people, an auditor we have lives in this county. So, we have people based in the cities, I'm out of Huntsville, but we have people, someone living in Coleman, someone living in Decatur, you know, all over the place.
When you're saying our administrator noticed that somebody's not paying, so y'all posted on there that it's not being paid, right?
Well, okay, if we are administering your sales tax, we will catch that.
That's right, so that's where I put my question. So, if you knew, you would catch it ahead of time.
Right, yeah, I guess I put that in the wrong way. But let's, okay, let's say she notices the number seems unusually low.
Right.
How about that?
Yeah, that's right.
That, you know, Jimmy's Juke Joint is bopping Friday and Saturday night, but he's only paying us $200 in taxes, you know, that kind of thing.
Okay.
And you should look into that kind of thing.
What would warrant a face-to-face visit? Like thirty days, sixty days?
For collections?
Yeah, for collections.
Um, it goes a little, it's changed since COVID, so they're going to try and make the contacts by call. They're not doing as many face-to-face, but they will if they have to. We'll still go out and do, if you choose to have us administer your tobacco, the business license people go out periodically, check the convenience stores, check the stamps, you're right next to a state line, that's, you know, it's not unusual for someone to go to Sands in Georgia and break it back here and slip it by without even paying the Alabama tax. So, we have those kinds of issues. So, collections, yes. If you're administered with the state, so we will have the data of what they report for the state taxes and what they report to you, and we can make those comparisons. Sadly, business owners are known to, if they know that there's two different parties involved, they'll tell the state they're making this much, and they'll tell Avenue this much, or they'll tell the self-administer a different number. And so, we can't make that comparison unless you're state-administered.
Yeah, that is a question I have, is because, like, I keep getting these letters from Avenue of not paying taxes when I'm paying to you guys. Are they any, do you guys coordinate together at any point?
All we do with third-party administer data is at the end of the day, it's processed, it becomes a file, it gets sent to them, and then they, they match it to their data. So, we're not, other than flowing through, we don't, we don't hold the money, we don't hold the data. At the end of the day, it's processed, it's sent to Avenue, and then Avenue.
So, Avenue, so if, say for instance, if someone's paying to you, then you're sending to Avenue that it's been paid?
We're sending, yeah, we're sending a file that has a copy of the return information, and then the payment information, the bank information, and the money goes to their bank. So, it just, it flows.
It's almost like it's mailed to the wrong place, and you just hand the whole file over to them to file it?
Kind of, but we're set up for that process. It's not mailed to the wrong place.
I know.
It's just the flow.
Yeah, there is a process.
Because I still get letters from mail continuously, and I'm paying you guys, and that's why I'm wondering, same thing, if somebody's paying Avenue, are you guys aware that they're being paid to Avenue?
At the end of each day, the max, from, I work outside of the actual Montgomery, but what I know is at the end of each day, all the returns that are processed are emailed off to their respective places.
Laura, yours is a coding issue, and I've talked to Avenue about that today, so I'll get with you on that. Yours is definitely a coding issue.
I may be getting ahead of myself.
I mean, you still don't understand.
Cross-reference business licenses and stuff like that, which Avenue can't.
Uh, yes, we have started doing, we started receiving city business licenses. The state business licenses come through the county courthouse anyway. So, yes, we do cross-reference and check business licenses during audits and using that information. Speaking of information, you know, we have access to IRS information. We receive their 1099 information, it's called 1099K, which gives you the credit card information, those reconciliations, plus we pay driver's license, hunting and fishing licenses, you got property tax. So, we're connected within the state, they can't access that information. So, when it comes to collections, if Jimmy's Juke Joint is not paying anything, we've got the audit, we've gone through the process, and he's living on a big house in his Bass boat, we go seize that and these things like that. So, I just try to make up examples.
One of the things that we run into here is where a guy is running a store, and he's selling the gas, and then he has a daily and the produce that's inside, or the goods that's inside, where he leases just inside, and then this guy is not paying his taxes.
Right, right. Yeah, the convenience stores, a couple of years ago, we came up, the legislature passed a thing called RAP, Wholesale Retail Accountability Program. The wholesalers of beer, wine, and tobacco provide us with their information. So, the sellers, Petree, or whoever else is going around delivering to the stores, we get that information. So, when that first came out, we actually had, you know, criminal investigations going out because you have somebody reporting $25,000 in sales, and they had $100,000 in purchases each month, just of beer, wine, and tobacco, and it includes Pepsi and anything else. So, since that's been going along, those, a lot of people have come up with compliance. But there's always new people in the game that think they can, they're smarter than everybody. I was just looking on Twitter, watching a guy stealing, looking at the guy's ring, and walking away, and went, he's looking right into the camera there.
And so, your system, your system cross-references on a monthly basis?
Yes, the RAP, the RAP unit is doing those comparisons, yes.
And y'all, the, maybe I don't have that system, correct?
They have access to that data, but if you want them to audit somebody, it will cost you. Their audits cost you additional, probably $78 an hour or more, whatever the contract states, plus they have a share of audit cost. That would be like, if they're auditing the Piggly Wiggly corporate office, and you've got a Piggly Wiggly in your county, they're going to go, hey, you got to pay part of this, whether they find money for you or not. We have what are called foreign orders, which are state-of-Alabama employees based outside of the state, such as Atlanta, or Dallas, or Los Angeles, or somewhere, and we're auditing those businesses outside that are making their sales in. And if you're state-administered, you get picked up. If you're not, they get missed. Let's see, with the auditing taxpayer assistance, you know, there, there, there's nine different places within the state. You can go, Avenue, Birmingham, I'm not even sure, Riverdale, made sure there's an office that a taxpayer can actually go to. So, I'm going to creep down, drive in near them. The reports that we provide, each month, each month, there's reports accessible online, all the way down to the return data, if she wants to keep up with that, or she can just look at a top twenty-five, it's going to give you your distribution reports. The deposits are made once a week, twice on the week of the twentieth, because as you know, the twentieth is the filing day, if you're not familiar. So, you'll see most of your money coming in the first three weeks to any delinquency in the last. That cuts down on someone having to reconcile a bank account with your deposit every other day. And we all know about the simplified seller's use tax, we call the Amazon tax. That's been growing, and the state has done, we administer that. That's not actually a local tax, that's just the state getting out of state people for compliance, send the money in to, and it's, you know, it's distributed sixty, forty, to operation. Okay, if we wanted to make some numbers on the second page, so, Lisa pulled three different months here, and they were, what I did is use what's called a detailed payment listing, which shows everybody that files. We take one step back. Our fee system is either two percent or $6.54 per account. Now, that per account does not include zero returns. So, it's whichever is less, and so that's, that's what this page shows. So, if we look on April, we took, we go with the different taxes that came in, the sales tax multiplying by two percent shows us it's $5,600 would have been the fee. But if we go back through the transaction method, once you take out the zero returns and any doubling, you had a few doublings, something like a car dealership that's going to show general annual loan grade, it's still on accounts as one. And so, seven hundred and one times the six fifty-four would be about $5,400. So, you would have been billed the $5,484 at the end of that month. Now, the next month, and I think this had to do with some timing, the way the returns work, because it looks strange to me, but anyway, this shows a good example. The two percent is $4,200, the six fifty-four was $4,300. We would have charged you the $4,285. And then you go back to June, well, then the dollars came in a little bit higher, and it went back to the per-transaction method. You would typically be on the per-transaction method, which is, I think it's good for budgeting because it's going to stay standard. You're not going to get these audit fees that keep changing up. And that, unless you have, you know, a city grow up and five hundred new businesses show up, the number of businesses is not going to change that drastically over time. So, a little farther down here, it gives a yearly estimation. So, whether it's a percentage or the transaction method, we're talking $62,000 to $55,000. All right, on the second page, the third page, pardon me, is a copy of your Avenue report for official year 2021. And if you'll notice, or I have hand written there, you have admin fees and audit fees. And that's what we're comparing, because the state includes all that together. Avenue will try to tell you all about their admin fees and how low it is until they add in the audit fees. I did subtract the tobacco tax from this, like I said, because it's actually a separate division, but I helped facilitate that. But if you take together, you know, $64,000 is what you paid over here, looking at our estimates, it's $62,000 to $55,000. So, I think, I think you'll be getting more services, and I think you'll be better services for a comparable price, hopefully even better if our auditors are bringing it. Once an auditor hits a good audit for you, it's all paid for. It's just, it's kind of, we have the authority of being the state of Alabama. I get phone calls from businesses that receive audit letters from Avenue asking what that is. We're one of the last few states that goes with the third-party administrators. So, are there any other additional questions?
Anybody got any questions?
I think I covered...
Well, I think if it's comparable, I think it's a no-brainer. We know the problems and issues that we've had with Avenue. I really think that Alabama Department of Revenue has bigger teeth, basically. I feel like people see a letter from the Alabama Department of Revenue and they think, I'm in trouble, I need to get this taken care of. And that's not the only reason, I mean, obviously, there's some, we've had a lot of customer service issues for that. We wouldn't all know that, we've all talked about it, so...
It's simple, there is just so much simpler with the state, yes, because you, it's just one spot. You go to it, the webpage is easy. I called their office, they answered me, I mean, they don't hesitate to answer.
A point I forgot, we don't require a contract, just the resolution naming the state. So, once you come in and you're not bound in, and...
Also, you have to please go back to, they go back...
Well, yeah, one of the benefits I come up with was, the fee that you're paying remains tax dollars with the state of Alabama. It goes into the Department of Revenue, it's part of the budget in the Department of Revenue, and it's continuing on. It's not just...
What's the, what's the curve, what's the curve for the collection now? Is it automatically, I mean, you know, like you said, yours to Avenue would come to you, and it's supposed to go to them, until it gets flipped back to you? Does everybody sell, the ones that are sending their checks to Avenue? How, how do we get that to...
Okay, so, a trend, if you decided to make the change, you require a sixty-day notice, so since we're end of the month, and we have to go with August, September, we start August first, so you remain contracted with them through that period, and then we make the change. We have the local tax unit in Montgomery, they would actually get in touch with there, Miss Pamela Spears and one of their associates, to get the information. We usually get her to print out one of the last detailed payment listings because people normally go through and make sure we have the same information. And usually, this is where a good theft happens, is it shakes the nuts out of the trees, the people who were paying the state and not paying you, and Avenue's not sending auditors around here looking for anything, so they don't catch it.
That's what I'm saying, I think that collections are going to make the difference. And I would hope that we can see that pretty quickly, that the collections make the difference in what might be a little bit cheaper at Avenue, although it looks like it's not that, the numbers are not that different.
It's not what we're led to believe.
It's not, they don't bring that up a lot.
Don't make you bring the feathers in here and make you file a lien. They'll file the liens, we will pursue the people, we will pat rock the door, we will see you.
The thing too, is if this is an audit, we're not, it's not coming out of our pocket. Or with Avenue, we have, even though I thought that if a person is found guilty of not paying their taxes, then they should be responsible for paying Avenue, but what she told us, no, we would still be responsible for it. And we have people out there who know that we already have farms collecting, and you've got a lot of, we've got a lot of, on the lodging side, we've got a lot of these bed and breakfasts that have popped up, and...
That's been one of the projects we've been doing, is going, getting to Airbnb, tracking people on the internet, what's, some of our newer auditors, the younger kids, go through Snap, Snap, Insta, Face, find people that are buying and selling.
We have got a lot of B and Bs that have popped up in Cleveland County.
We, I think we have full contracts, right?
We did.
Would that be an issue, because we can't, if we voted, which I'm not saying we're going to vote, if we did, would that be an issue because two of the contracts are not due?
You can end the contract at any time with ninety days' notice, 42A12.
Okay.
So, all you have to do is give them like ninety days' notice, and we can pick up at that point. So, if you want to cancel them all and start with the state on a certain date, that's fine. If your contract with them expires, they'll gladly feed you month by month until they do their thing. So, we're a little flexible on that, and you have options.
Any more questions? Ruth, we said you don't. Yes, sir.
Do you need to come there?
Terrence Henry, sorry. I'm a commissioner, I'm just running the business today, because Prodigy is gone.
Right.
But, Lisa will be in touch with you, we appreciate it.
Okay, thank you very much.
You should say, or if you...
My home's in Huntsville.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
I'm actually on the officials, we don't have any officials. Be it openings, be it openings, awards, scheduled public hearings, consent agenda. We've got everything signed up on, and consent agenda except for... We'll move that over to new business, and it'll be high. All right, does anybody want to make a motion to accept the consent?
Make a motion to accept.
My second.
People want a favor? No, nice, and that passes. New business. Good house ventilation. Lisa, I don't know, let you read that, it just takes about two pages long.
That's, that's my resolution for you. Okay, this is a resolution that's in any public facilities to be evaluated for technical upgrades to ventilation systems. Whereas Cleveland County, Alabama County, has received American Rescue Plan Act state and local fiscal recovery funds, ARCA funds, which have been duly designated as for drinking and replacement funds. And whereas the Cleveland County Commission, the commission is charged with ensuring that such funds are extended in accordance with state and federal law. And whereas the final rule issued by the U.S. Department of Treasury on January sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, provides the improvements to ventilation systems in public facilities are ineligible to use of ARCA funds. And whereas the commission has contracted with the Association of County Commissions of Alabama through its Investing in Alabama Counties program, IAC, to provide technical and administrative services related to the administration of the county's ARCA funds. And whereas IAC has made available to the county at no additional cost services conducted by a duly licensed architectural and engineering team to evaluate the current ventilation systems in up to two public, uh, public facilities to provide recommendations for changes to these systems to bring them into compliance with the guidelines and are issued by the Centers of Disease Control for Mediating the Spread of COVID-19. And whereas the commission desires to take advantage of these services to evaluate the current ventilation systems in the county's courthouse and public library buildings, now therefore be resolved by the commission as part of the Department of Commerce and the Department of Judiciary, provided before noted, IAC schedule onsite inspections of the ventilation systems in the county's courthouse and public library buildings. Two, the inspection of course finding report of recommendations shall be predated and prepared by the county. Three, following the receipt of the Department of Architecture's report recommendations, the county will require a report finding to the commission every three, next regularly scheduled court session. And four, allocation of ARCA funds to cover costs and committing any permanent upgrades shall be subject to part of the commission and shall be part of contingent on the continued appropriation of the ability of ARCA revenue replacement funds for this purpose. We know that shall ARCA funds be used for any expenses not obligated by December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, and extended by December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six. All right, the motion, that was settled, please.
Second.
First and second, any questions, discussing? What's up? You want to go first? I'm also on, I'm motion carries. All right, new business item two. Whereas the Cleveland County Commission desires that the Department of Engineering implement vacation for proportion canary before four-eighteen. Whereas the commission understands that this procedure for doing so requires public hearing and voting to citizens who think about vacation. Therefore, be resolved, the commission directs the county engineer to advertise the schedule of public hearing to be held during the August two thousand and twenty-two, according to the schedule of the commission.
Second.
Everybody in favor, say aye. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I think so would be appropriate for a motion to take. They'll agree to it when it's done, okay?
I do, I do have one question now. On there, he's going to specify a certain area for that, which should be in the paper. It's not the whole road, it's just a portion of that road.
Correct, but yeah, he, Lisa.
I'm making a motion on table, C.
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 Second.
Second.
Everybody in favor?
Aye.
We move back to next month. New business item D.
I'm making a motion, would we pass that?
I accept the motion.
Oh, we got to read it too? It was just a motion table.
See, we had all this consent agenda, we didn't have to do it.
Yeah, if it's all consent agenda, you wouldn't have to read it.
All right, whereas the notice that's going to see from Alabama Beverage's Control Board preparing to have two new license types added. Here it is, the two license types are follows, hospitality management program license and food or beverage truck license. Whereas these two license types do not have local license fees established at this time, and therefore, the Cleveland County Commission hereby resolves to charge fees of $1,300. $1,000 for the hospitality, $300 for the beverage, but we may need to clarify that a little better, if you think.
I just put respectfully, so I thought that that would lay out.
But it is. The word respectfully means, $1,000 would be hospitality management, the owner would be free to pay.
Okay, respectfully, which matches the state rates. All right, stop pushing the motion.
Did what?
Second.
Second.
Can you discuss them? Can you discuss them?
These things were, these things were stated. Those are the state fees. Did we check the same way? I checked, I checked for California, and I checked for Grand Ole County. They were, they were both voting on it yesterday, but what they were putting forth was a match with state rates. So, I feel like that's what, what they probably go past, that's what they were, that's what they had written up today. Were all like, there were one of those two years where the day is planned, one was either last night or tonight, they were doing.
County was on Thursday.
It was on Thursday, so...
They did, there's...
Maybe I necessarily...
And Randolph was just...
Randolph, just, I didn't practice it.
Kevin, I asked for you, man. I didn't see the, the filed resolution, but I knew it was on their agenda by the way.
It was lots of...
Randolph, Randolph.
The top of both of them.
I just know, you know, somebody started out, just called, and, you know, some of these days get...
And, uh, you know, some of these days get tough and we're in a new business.
Any more questions, discussing, read your book, all in favor?
Uh, no.
Okay, new business item P. Okay, you want to put on this one because quick, uh, Marty here to answer any questions. We need to just go ahead and read it and get into the discussion phase and run him up here.
Yeah, motion in a second, maybe you can break my book down.
All right, item E, whereas the transportation department requires funding to be placed in the fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget to continue the transportation program. Whereas the county commission expresses its need for more information before adding this to upcoming budgets. Therefore, the commission asked that the county minister, the transfer of the transportation department to obtain such information. I don't know, I don't think we've got a resolution for that.
Basically just passing.
Okay, so we're casting the county minister, pick him up. Second. All right, discussing, Marty, you want to come up here?
Yes. And that's, that's actually what, what I, I took that you wanted to do is to actually get him here for the information to make decisions about the budget.
Wings, the only thing we're actually voting on is.
Just a lot of, right.
Yeah, I mean, we're not voting, we're not to, to live the money, it's.
I just never know if I should ask it.
Got a question more?
And in this way, gentlemen can give whatever, answer whatever questions y'all have. And then Lisa can go forward, carry out the exact numbers to be forwarded to the question.
We'd have that resolution for East Alabama, this is a. Is it D at this time?
Yes, it's about a week.
It's coming, yeah.
No, it's a week, I was, that's the time I brought, I brought it here to you. That led on this, the last month, that he was presenting with you. And now we're handling money for the, the.
Lisa, I don't know, Lisa, can we turn it back to you?
Uh, last month seventeen.
I, I didn't know last, that, that was before our budget period, I, I, I consider about a budget item.
So we need to vote on it tonight because it's D next week.
Now, it was due a month ago.
Oh, it's past.
It was, I get it from the leader, I get it from the leader to present the yard. And whenever East Alabama called me, I called Lee and he said, Will, it's probably in on my days, so I looked at it.
That's what we need to do then, we'll have to, the original resolution and add, but right now let's just discuss this and then we'll come back.
Normally East Alabama comes to the league and always coming and talk to us about it. That's my question is.
Usually, usually, they, they, they come, they come and they're stopped by buying a bus or, uh, I mean, they come and talk to us about buying equipment, but usually when it's just.
That's why, why it's important to keep the problem, what, it would, what, uh, what we pay versus what they will pay. But since what information you gave us, Marty, um, I think it was thirty, what is it, was it what, thirty-five thousand? That was the amount into our.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three, eight forty-three.
Which is roughly.
Our portion is thirty-three, what?
Eight forty-three.
Which is roughly, because we didn't have a number of people, we just had the, what we got, what they gave us was just strictly the, uh, the amount of trills, which is average amount of about seven hundred and forty-seven dollars each trio.
That means true.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, from what, what he gave us, did you calculate it, Terry?
I did not.
I calculated it and I was getting much, did you, Lisa?
I did not, no. Uh, if you look at this data that's on here for the month and year, let's see, we've got, that's actually what you're gonna have for the data right there. No, I have not, I have not calculated how much per, per trip. We got your number on.
How are you doing with S four A's, uh, the same citizen, you picking up any, or you been able to get some more people to stop riding more, Marty?
I've got two new ones in the last two months, in the last month and a half, I've got two new ones. Um, I've got, there's a lady here who rides sometimes, I'll on top of her, I'm sure she'd had, had, answering the question, yeah. But the, this means so much to those people. Right now, I've got, I've got twenty-eight people, before COVID, I had almost eighty people. These are elderly people, they're scared of the COVID still, I mean, they, the way the media puts it out there, you know, everybody's still scared, so.
The, the COVID money, actually paid for this the last two years, you know, we don't have any carryover on that.
They're not gonna extend it?
No, not this year, he said, well, no, they're not gonna extend it right now.
That's why.
They're, I mean, it's second. The way I said, November, yeah, they might pop back up and extend it, I mean.
Because COVID has started coming back up.
Yeah. It's, these people that I carry, I'm just about the only way that we can get to the doctors. Miss Lynn, she, she schedules sometimes ten to three months ahead of time. I mean, and, and she goes, I mean, this happens, she got, she may have, uh, three, maybe four doctor trips a month. But I've got other people the same way, I've got, I've got a lady up sixty-six, seventy-eight. Uh, she goes to the grocery store, uh, once a week religiously because they, her son does not have a vehicle. They got no other way of going. I've got a lady, uh, I mean, everybody I carry has not got a vehicle, I mean, pretty much. I'm the only way of going and, and I just don't, I, I, you know, I understand the county is not as wealthy as Kevin can, I understand that, but I just don't, uh, I don't know, I just, I feel like these people really need it.
Uh, I just figured, I'm sorry, Marty, the first twelve months on there listed on, on the sheet that he gave us, which I just did, I just did that for this year, but I divided the total number of the part that we would pay was the thirty-three, eight forty-three and divided by that many riders, just, just the riders, and it's about four hundred and three dollars per rider for the.
Yes, ours providing by triops, so.
Right.
Sort of that, yeah.
Let me, let me ask you this, if, if the county's part is thirty-four thousand dollars and it's paying my salary and the gas, I don't spend no money on that, I don't, I don't buy any pens, because I buy it out of my pocket. I've spent no more money other than the gas and my salary, that's it.
And I can testify to that because I've, I'm, I've looked at what he's had on transportation costs for this year and other than about sixteen or seventeen dollars, it's just that his salary is the only thing that we.
Now, on top of that, does East Alabama not match whatever half of what, what this is? Would they not match half of that?
Their portion of.
This, this is our portion, I think they did.
Yeah.
They already done, they're managing.
That is, we're nine months into the year, that is our portion.
Because the total is like seventy-seven thousand and then. For the transportation bills, it costs us, the, costs us seventy-seven thousand, a lot of seventy-seven thousand. But you've got money coming in federal state and, um, part of East Alabama. So that, so then that leaves us paying the difference, which is the thirty-four.
And in that state, I'm, I'm part of the form that he gave us, that the total federal funds is forty thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine dollars. And ours will be thirty-three thousand, eight forty-three.
Can we, um, S four A is getting the word out, maybe, um, reaching out to more people? We need more people riding the bus.
Uh, I totally agree, um. Not everybody's yet, uh, Facebook, I don't know, but, uh, you know, I, I, every now and then I'll venture by the nutrition centers, like Big Earth, Ramber, my brother, there, and interview myself and, uh.
You know, do you do paperwork with them?
Sometimes I do, I, I had flyers one time.
Yeah, and I think to getting the flowers out to your different businesses, you know, people sees. Because I know before in my area, we, we didn't have anybody riding.
Yeah.
Well, I know now, but I'm saying because they had no knowledge of it.
Yeah, and they, there's people calling me, there's people calling me and, uh, they said, how long has it been going on? Probably a little over twenty years, I mean.
About an hour and twenty, but.
Now, I know Terry and I will be at the, and, and other people, what Terry, you're there on the fifteenth?
On the, you talking about the paperwork on it? That is.
You're gonna be at the Ramber senior citizen with, uh, with the.
Did you guys watch where we can meet each other?
Sure. Yeah, community act, or they are Monday, July eighteenth, we're ten, ten o'clock for Ramber and then two thirty, we'll be at the twenty-third at ten o'clock.
Yeah, and, but I'm, at the program center, I'm encouraging to other people, not just the senior citizens to come in that day. And that was my big time that you needed to be at this location to talk to people.
I reckon there's any way we could get the garbage to send out a notice or get the water department to send out a notice or tax or something. Being included in your.
Well, well, you know, they, they told us before, we'd send out, we'd send them the letter, that they'd be glad to include it in anything. When they represent us for our.
Is that something you'd be willing to do, Marty, get that going?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm looking for new riders over there.
We just gotta get numbers, I mean, to be able to make this problem continue, that has got to get numbers up and we all know that. I mean, you know it as well as every one of us sitting here and I was it.
Most of, you got most of the, the country, most of.
Yeah, then I had four of the dads.
You hit your topic, so, and your, Terry's.
That's how many more riders do you need?
I need to get back to, back fifty, don't we?
We need to get it back up, because again, if I have flyers, I can put them out at our complex, on our whole complex.
I mean, I think that's, that's the issue, we're just not getting the word out to, to people in music to make it worthwhile.
I mean, I've watched. This past week, this past week, one of the seniors in Hickman, one of the part, the elderly's, they had a, a, a cookout, they had a cookout. Those are the things that I feel like that you need to find out about and be there and need on that level, know that this program's available. But I know like they had that cookout this weekend and if I thought about it, I would have, but it didn't register to me.
Well, there's, there's not many apartment complexes in that, that I don't look to every month, I mean. There's, uh, I mean, I've got a lady down there, and Mr. Peels carried up, she's got a big dialysis, she's been calling me since March. Carried dialysis, but yet she ain't lived down there yet, she's still living in the facility, because she's waiting on dishwasher. And, and whenever she called and I scheduled her, and then for that four hours, you know, I'd run her down there and come back and grab somebody to carry some more zets. But whenever she gets done, the people on dialysis are ready to go home, go to, I mean, it's just pretty much it. So I try to be there as soon as I get done and get them back, get them back home, uh.
So I got this information that we'll, we'll have to add this resolution.
Well, the motion is on, the motion is currently under consideration is the tasking to these, to get this information that you just got. So if you call for a vote and nobody votes on it, it dies.
And then we'll just move on to the end of the meeting and add the resolution she's got from East Alabama.
So we just vote no, yeah, to the tasking.
Okay.
All right. We got, Marty got a motion in a second, so.
No. No. The resolution, okay.
This is a resolution to pass, which we don't, we need to do something, man, so.
Okay, do it.
Okay, I forgot my, my. Hold the pose, she's got one in East Alabama, so, okay, this one. Okay, it fails. All right, new business item P. Whereas the Cleveland County Health Department offers a wide range of services to the citizens of Cleveland County. Whereas the Cleveland County Commission recognizes that the Health Department's mission is to provide public health resources for all Cleveland County citizens. Whereas a request has been received for five thousand dollars in local funding from the Cleveland County Commission and therefore, Cleveland County Commission agrees to add this item to this upcoming budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. All in favor? All opposed? Put behind you yours. One half, three members. Okay, how about this? This is a new, new business item D, this is kind of interesting because you've got, and Lisa and I talked about this before, and you've got two resolutions to approve the same thing. But it appears that from the discussion that the Department Regulate Individuals stated, if the commission is considering going back route, which it seemed to be the general consensus during that discussion, we would need a resolution to terminate avenue insights with a ninety-day notice and then a resolution to approve Department Regulate on that no effective date. We would also need to know all four contracts for just the, so, the month.
Well, then with the ninety-day notice, you determine it all four.
So, did we want?
Because I've rewritten most of these resolutions, if that's the way I want to go.
Okay, so, so let me just read this and then nobody makes a motion, it'll die and we can move on. Whereas avenue insights is a tax administrator for Cleveland County sales and use tax, bank tax, firework tax and lodging tax. Whereas the current contracts for firework tax and lodging tax renewals or need for renewable and whereas the commission wishes that avenue insight continued to provide this service for the county and therefore the county, Cleveland County Commission authorized this chairman to sign contract renewals for fireworks and lodging tax, that's the motion. All right, no motion at that. Okay, we need to.
You can read this next one by title because it's got an actual official title.
Okay.
So if you want to just read the bold four on title and then if there's no motion, it will die.
That's what we need to do, then move on to the motion. Resolution authorizing Alabama Department to administer and collect fireworks and lodging taxes, maybe by the Cleveland County Commission. Got a motion? That is the last motion. All right, so, add is going to be.
Reserve fund resolution taking all consent agenda number five.
Yep.
And then you have rewritten it?
I have, sir.
New resolution.
What are we going with, what's going, we're going with, actually, are we going with?
This is the reserve fund. We'll have to vote that, uh, this, this, we just move this, move this, hold this.
Whereas the reserve account is increasing monthly due to twenty percent of collected sales tax being transferred to this account. And whereas the Cleveland County Commission would like to establish the amount of two million dollars as a threshold balance. And whereas the Cleveland County Commission would like to decrease the amount of sales tax transferred to this account to ten percent when the balance exceeds the threshold balance and automatically increase it to twenty percent when the balance falls below the threshold balance. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Cleveland County Commission sets a threshold balance in the reserve account at two million dollars. Any monthly period when the balance exceeds that amount, only ten percent of sales tax will be transferred. And the balance falls below the threshold on a monthly period, the amount transferred will return to twenty percent.
That's the motion.
I like the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
From here on top of that, when it grow out from building, right?
And you've made a copy of this.
All right, so now we need to add the public transportation. All right, we need to vote to, we need to vote to add.
Yes.
Okay. We vote to add a resolution for the transportation notice.
Can I make the motion there?
All in favor? Okay, we're bending to new business, it'll be.
Okay, we don't have a J.
J.
Okay.
This is resolution for section fifty-three eleven, non-urbanized area of public transportation. Whereas the Cleveland County Commission recognizes the need for a public transportation program. And whereas the Cleveland County Commission is recognized as a member of the Cleveland County Transportation Steering Committee. And whereas the Cleveland County Commission recognizes that the requirements to obtain section fifty-three eleven funds from the Alabama Department of Transportation includes a local match, fifty percent for operating expenses, and twenty percent for administration and capital expenses. And whereas the Cleveland County Commission recognizes that the local match will be a shared cost with other participating municipalities being responsible for providing appropriate allocation of local non-federal funds to secure the operating of the section fifty-three eleven non-urbanized area of public transportation program. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Cleveland County Commission hereby admits the amount of thirty-three thousand eight hundred and forty-three dollars as local non-federal max of capital and administrative and operations expenditures under the section fifty-three eleven non-urbanized area of public transportation program during fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Be it further resolved, the commission chairman has authorized to execute an agreement with East Alabama Regional Planning and Development Commission for provision of transit services in Cleveland County, and that the chairman has also authorized to execute any certifications and assurance of our introduction to the program.
All right, any discussion?
Uh, on the third three, when will you need to send that? Will we need to man some company for that funding, or?
Goes in the next year's budget, doesn't it? It's not really a payment now, we just reviewed the contract.
Okay.
This, this is what it says, it's twenty-three budget.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, read the book, all in favor? Man. What else do you have? We leave something out?
Well, you have, if it's the will of the commission, item K to add and B to terminate.
Avenue's contract.
Exactly.
Yes.
The main thing is that we know, Maury, we all have to work together to get these numbers up. You know, reach out to your people, because, you know, we have to answer to other people that were, were providing this service, but it, it, it is still cost of accounting, and it's costing the county. Seven hundred dollars, well, what is costing each individual, it's costing us to provide that service over four hundred dollars per person. So, we just, we need to get the numbers up.
If you can come up with a letter, or, or get Lisa to write a letter, or Lee or somebody, and we can get it to the water department, or to, to the tax assessor or somebody, we'll, we'll try to get it mailed out.
Maury is a great service, and we don't want to lose it, but we've got to get the numbers up, because every year, you know, it gets, it gets on that borderline, you know, of, of us losing that program. So we've got to get the numbers up.
Thank you, Maury.
Thank you, Maury.
We need to add items K and L, okay? K would be a resolution to terminate Avenue Insights, and L would be a resolution to approve Alabama Department of Revenue tax administration.
Okay. Book and, uh, to add this to new business? All in favor of add? The analysts, okay.
Item K, whereas Avenue Insights is a current tax administrator for Cleveland County's sales and use tax, tobacco tax, fireworks tax, and lodging tax. And whereas the current contracts for fireworks tax and lodging tax renewal are due for renewal. And whereas the commission wishes to terminate all contracts to tax administration with Avenue Insights by providing ninety days' written notice of termination with the effective termination date being November first, twenty twenty-two. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Cleveland County Commission to direct the county administrator to deliver termination notification to Avenue Insights for all tax administration services with an effective date of November first, twenty twenty-two.
That's the motion.
The motion?
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
New business item L, a resolution authorizing the Alabama Department of Revenue to administer and collect all sales and use tax, tobacco tax, fireworks tax, and lodging taxes levied by the Cleveland County Commission. Be ordained by the commission of the county of Cleveland as follows. Section one, administration and collection by Alabama Department of Revenue pursuant to the provisions of the Code of Alabama nineteen seventy-five, section eleven dash fifty-one dash two oh seven. The county of Cleveland hereby directs that the Department of Revenue of the state of Alabama shall administer and collect all sales and use tax, tobacco tax, fireworks tax, and lodging taxes levied and assessed under the provisions of this resolution to the fullest extent allowed by Alabama law. Section two, certified copy, the county of Cleveland shall provide a certified copy of this resolution to the Alabama Department of Revenue, and shall also provide such other information and take such other steps as may be required by said Department of Revenue to enable it to administer and collect taxes levied and assessed under the provisions of this resolution beginning on November first, twenty twenty-two. The Cleveland County Commission hereby authorizes its chairman to sign a document authorizing tax administration for sales and use tax, tobacco tax, fireworks tax, and lodging taxes through the Alabama Department of Revenue.
Let me make the motion, then we discuss it.
Second.
First and second, okay, discussion.
Did we add item K when we added J, or just?
They voted that vote out.
Okay.
We had a broken.
Just want to make sure.
Can, can L.
I'm gonna keep our ducks in the rug.
Okay, so, so I'm gonna include the S A C T tax. Who collects that for?
Currently.
I mean, he's, he's.
Okay, what, did you, I had all sorts of use tax.
Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any manors? All right, moving on to reports from staff, county administrator.
Well, we haven't been busy or anything, but with the Alabama Department of Revenue plans and all that, we've also got number one audit going on right now, and it's going very well. We'll actually continue that this week. I kind of feel like we're gonna wrap it up this week. I know that Tori, the one that's been here this week with me, um, she's at the Brianna, which is her supervisor, Brianna Church. She'll be here tomorrow, and then Adam, another auditor, will be here with her on Thursday. I kind of feel like with them bringing that many people in, that they're getting ready to, like, hit the, the crunch part of it and get it knocked out, so. Um, but it's going very well. We're not, we're not having any problems coming up with any reports or anything that are asked of porn, so we're good so far.
Let me ask you a question.
Uh-huh.
I got that email, and I just thought about it right then. Do you have a form we can sign?
The frauds.
Yeah.
What about the audit?
Yeah.
Yeah, we always, we always have to sign one.
But it's after the thing. They have not asked, they have not asked me to get any.
No, we're not, we're just starting to do, because we're supposed to notify them, we're being taken, we know. But I got an email, but I didn't respond to the email.
I have not seen that. I have seen that.
Well, anyway, if, if, that's me, you go to.
I, I know that, I know that she did ask me right, right, probably on the first day, they confirmed who all, um, you were as far as y'all were basically, and I'm all in board. And they, they were confirming all that, but they have not asked me to get any of that signed from you.
Okay, so the second attachment on this is fraud related party letter. And we need to know whether you are aware of any fraud or related party transactions during this examination period. We will need a response from each of you, so I'm assuming that's a form we need to sign out.
Yeah, usually we get a form, but.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Well, okay, that, maybe that's an attachment. It is an attachment.
It is.
Okay.
And, and they said that they were bringing all that electronically this time, so.
Can you print some out?
They left a sign after me.
Yes.
But you know, I'll be.
I haven't actually got one, because I also don't believe this enough to you, but if you'll forward it to me, I'll print out for you.
Okay.
Well, I can see the, what you're talking about.
There's two attachments.
I see that. Please need to sign the, sign at the bottom, because that's what, what a form is, I just. Okay, so just print that out, sign it, and send it back to them, okay?
Okay. Send it to you after mine.
What else, Scotty?
Okay, um, I have, I am on the brink of sending out a report to another one. I have actually already provided a few of them, the ones I needed, didn't have anything, and it's been cleaned up. Um, our department heads will have them all before lunchtime tomorrow. A few of them, like I said, I've already sent out the ones I need. I didn't catch anything that I needed to clean up. Couple of them have little small journal entries to do. Um, I will say this, that for the most part, it looks like everybody's pretty much on track to stay within their budget as far as their overall numbers, as far as what I've seen so far. Um, I have had, had a couple of times, I've had requests from Lane, um, saying that typically there's a carryover for the jail and the sheriff's department, and he's asked that we add, add that to his appropriations line. And I'm not sure how that's been done before, because I do not see any line. I was on his past budgets on his encumbrance reports showing that anything's been added to appropriations. So I'm not sure at this point exactly what we're wanting to do with that. He said usually about December or January, it's been done every year. And I, I seen a record of it, and maybe I'm not looking in the right place, but he did say that he would get pollinated with me, and maybe she could show me what, and I said, that's, that's fine, show me, show me on a report where it's been done before, and, and at least I know how it was done. Um, you know, it's a matter of just moving something from our appropriation line and general fund over to that department, and that's, that is what it is. But, um, also, I mean, they're not over budget or anything that, at this point, so do you do that before they go over budget? Do you, do you want to do that for them? But that's something to, to think about, and all that. I will send those out to you, um, tomorrow, so you'll be able to look at it, too. But like, right now, the sheriff's department, overall, they're at seventy-five percent of their budget, which is exactly what it should be right now. They're seventy-five, five percent, so they're right on budget. Um, the jail, seventy-two percent. So it's not like they're about to over budget.
Well, this carryover, you're talking about, it's not about paper or anything, it's just, uh.
No, it's not. It's about, it's about, you're saying, this is how much carryover we have from last year, and.
How much, how much you think is enough? Are they gonna need cars, because they have my big car money?
The, the jail, the jail is only at about nine thousand dollars. You know, it's always pretty tight on its budget. It's, I want to say it was about sixty-nine thousand for sheriff's department, so it would be enough to buy a vehicle. And I, I did mention this, Mr. Hendricks earlier. It started making me think about that money that they're asking for the school resource officers, but I don't know if that's even in the play, or if that's something they'd be interested in, you know, using the carryover money for. It's just a thought. When I started thinking of that number, I was thinking of.
Actually, there's no thought in our minds that everyone uses that carryover much.
Yeah, I mean, if you're asking for money, you should have, you should try to provide a way of how you're gonna come up with that money, and I'm just saying that.
If that money is gonna be needed in the next two or three months, maybe it's for, why not, I suppose.
I know we do, and that's, and that's, I don't know if they're saying, you know, we just want our money, or, but I think it's their money.
Question, too.
Or they don't, there's means, or they're anticipating cost of something. I, I, he does not mention any specific name, or he is saying, do we have this money to spend?
I know you and I have talked about, um, the workers' comp and everything, and, and all through there, you know, it's, it's a negative.
Right.
And, but where is the money I have to balance out that negative?
The workers' comp, it sits in the account, specifically.
I just, because all of the, every one of those is gonna be in a negative when it comes to workers' comp.
Right, all of them are, and that's because, like, for instance, for an apartment, if the anticipated budget needed for that line home was five thousand dollars, they might have only put thirty-five hundred on it, because they know that that money, they'd actually been overpaying into that account for workers' comp. And that was part of what the budget process this year. It took me a minute to figure that out, so it's any nuts or anything on it, but I didn't figure that out.
Because when we did the budget next year, I don't know the budget I need for.
And we'll, we'll know more, um, you know, as, as we work through this, I'm, I'm making sure that I'm gonna check if anyone has some of the in the ground, have some of the information on the workers' comp stuff, also looking to see how that's balancing out, just see how we need a budget for workers' comp this year. And typically, your attorney does most of the salary budgeting, but the, you know, I'll end up being with her as far as that goes, with those numbers.
And it should stay down, according to our last meeting, workers' comp, you know, everything's still across the state, everybody, um, you know, our departments are all still.
Good. Well, it, you know, for a little bit, it kind of just bothered my mind, because I could see, plainly see where the salary budget worksheet was worked up, and it showed these amounts. And then I would look over at the budget, and I'm like, wait a minute, they didn't budget enough in this department. But then, after I kind of did it, we're moving on, but that's actually what I'm having, so. So the money's sitting up in the workers' comp, workers' comp, and I say, yes, I'm there, yes.
Right, I want to talk about the resource officer for a minute, is, is much needed, and I would like for us to act on it, but I'm thinking maybe we should get John Daniel back up to here and kind of quiz him a little bit about the duties of the officer.
That's something you deserve for next month.
Well, because you and I live, or two of us, at the trade school, or, or two of the locations are not protected.
Right. And I won't act on it, but I've heard some things that are kind of disturbing, and we need to clear it up.
Well, I'm sure we'll be with you for any sessions that I have with John. He has also been, uh, working a little bit on the share of vehicle maintenance bid. I'm not ready to send that out yet, I'm still, um, tweaking that a little bit, because we're, we're taking the original, uh, fleet vehicle maintenance bid and adapting it to just the sheriff's department, so I've got a little work to do with that. But he has at least responded, which, you know, sometimes that's at the back, was to get, to make work with you on something.
I think you need to, to talk to him and tell him that this is a priority, because our, our, it starts anyway. And to, just needs to be, we need to be awarded this to somebody, so it looks like they're doing something.
Well, and, and, you know, the worst case scenario, we don't have an actual bid out, we're worried yet, at least we can show that we've got this bid, the package put together. I mean, we know it's, we know it's a finding, it is a finding, and it's gonna be a finding. But three times here tomorrow, and I'll talk to her, too.
Just ask John to prioritize and just.
Well, well, all these, uh, officers just want to put this, I mean, in our rural area.
I said, there's a lot of placement things.
Well, I'm just saying, uh, what about getting with the school board members and talking to them about, uh, maybe getting some training for some of the people, like at the trade school? I mean, out there, there's proper people that steal a couple of deer and skin a couple of them. Or can we do something inside the school and, and pay, uh, you know, and, and try to find some of the teachers that would want to participate?
Yeah.
Because it, it, it's like that this school, we're able to do at elementary school, they're putting in windows right now, brand new windows in. And when you say if you turn the light on, it's like a magnifying glass, used for them to the parking lot. What's the daddy gonna do sitting at the door when every window around there, they're wide open for a decent picket, I mean?
Let me tell you what they did at Ford doors. They put in new windows, but they also, they had, uh, which was, um, Mark, uh, Mark, uh, Marty, Kate Ashley's husband, and for her, they went in, because my niece seen the same thing he's done. She's like, this is asking for people to look and see, they put this, um, coating on the windows where you can see out, but you can't see in. They can see, you know, when people's coming in. They can see, you know, when people's coming in, but nobody can see on the inside of the window. But you're talking about, you know, trying people at the front of our school is, I'd say ninety-seven percent all in.
Didn't press on this, uh, too. Okay, uh, shut it up a little.
I think that's awesome.
We don't have, we're not gonna be able to act on this before school's, you know, but I suggest that, that we get John to like in here and grill him good about this, like, sure we don't understand.
If it's that important to everybody, we can call a special work session to have him come up with. There's also gonna be some federal money because that bill that dispensed Congress has had to sign, there's money in there for school safety. I don't know how this particular land does, you know, it'd be nice to know that.
Is it not through the board of education?
I don't know, I see they just signed it last week, so I don't know, I don't really, I haven't seen it.
I feel like some of the members of board of education needs to be on this meeting, still with us.
Well, we're, see, Brian's done had this meeting with the board of education, none of us were invited.
Well, you know, it's the same thing is with the S U T. You, you want to take this money, but then you want us to offer these other services. We can offer these services, but we, we don't issue too much of them.
Yeah, but if that money, the, the new money can come sort of over, and if it goes right to the school, they're gonna use it for their portion that they're offering, okay?
You know, it's something that.
See, I want to call a special meeting and invite Representatives from Board of Education and John Daniel and police chiefs, if anyone wants to show up. Or do you want to wait until next month?
What the date would be, because he's gonna be gone, I don't know, be gone by the end of the month, and.
I mean, wait till next, next month's work session?
Yeah.
Not matter a minute.
We need all of us here.
Well, I'm gonna be back until, I'm, I'm gonna be gone all of next month, so it'll be the following month I'll be here.
Well, we did, we need to slate until we're all full because it, it affects all of our districts. And I know him, he's got a lot of insight on, uh, the school there, and he's, he's, he's got a son that's in the school, so I think more insight.
Well, one thing I see is, is, is sitting at that, at the front door, at our, at a lot of our area schools, it needs to be, it, it, it really needs to be a lot more thought or process because, like, at the headless school, I'm just sitting there watching it, and I mean, every door swinging open, every back door's coming in and out, and if you think my deputy's sitting at the front door spending seventy-five dollars a year per school, is gonna do anything, I don't see it.
See, that's like trade school too, they got all the roll up doors. You're on one end of the trade school, something happens on the other end, you ain't even got time.
Well, what you gotta do, you gotta secure the grounds first, and, uh, you know, they got a little four foot gate and high foot. I mean, I, I don't know what they got a crew person, but they've got a gate around that.
See, it's federal money, I don't know, like I said, I hadn't thought, I don't know if it's gonna be for dancing, I don't know if it's gonna be for officer, but there is federal money that's fixing to come down.
Well, the thing about it is, is our population, we probably won't get a fence out of it for our population.
But how is the city, are they in there at the school? Ranburn, do they have officer in the school?
They, they proposed a list for them to have an officer in the school.
At, at Ranburn, at, at Haight, what they did, you know?
Well, you see at Heathen, you've got three schools there. You got a little middle school, you got a little school, and you got a.
They have officers just rotate between the three schools and the jail.
Well, yes. I, I haven't talked to Robbie or, or to, uh, let's see, police to find out what their idea is to have, have handle it.
Okay, let's, let's decide when we're gonna discuss it, because we don't have time for anything, we're talking about tonight.
Okay, well, my, my last thing is I'm gonna interview Sheila Krista, she is our new commission clerk. Mr. Craig with Dustin Ryan.
Yeah, you do.
Okay, she's from Piedmont, and she just started today, so we're trying not to overwhelm her too much, but.
She's in Piedmont or what?
Well, my address is Piedmont, like, I mean, why please for this trip, I don't claim Piedmont. But living in community, a mess is great.
Well, welcome to.
Welcome to the team.
Welcome to the house.
I was gonna say, yes, calling the family.
I said, no, that was worse.
Okay, back to this, well, do y'all wanna call a special meeting, or?
Well, I think it's based September, you just said, right?
Yeah, just wait until he gets back in.
Okay, so it's something we discuss next month?
Yeah, we'll work with, but I'll be back in work such and such a day. Have any of y'all reached out to your, uh, school board members?
I have, I have talked to the school member, I haven't talked to my board member yet. I got my niece and several of them's already, already called me on it.
I don't know how.
I guess they've talked about it at the board.
Okay, I got a question back on the, the jail and sheriff's money. Uh, is that something that they're gonna spend up before the end of the fiscal year and ask for some more? If we move that money over?
I, I feel like they want to know if that's available to them to spend for, on something, they have not specifically asked for any particular item that they want to spend it on, they want to know, what do we, what can we spend?
We, their money gets moved over the year.
That is the question.
But I don't think it's moved over this early.
There's a lot of questions coming up.
Well, I think, I think what they're trying to do is secure that we've always done it, but, you know, there was, I think the question has been said, well, I don't know if I move it over, correct?
Well, my question is, should I move it over there? I, I don't know how it's been done in the past. Lane says it was moved to an appropriation line, well, I pulled up the budgets and then, I, I can pull encumbrance reports either back from last year. If it had been moved.
I think, I think what it was done, I think what it was done, it was, it was, it was just moved in, but it wasn't a line item, I don't think.
And then his.
Because see, it was already in the bu, the budget's already in, it won't be any money in for next year's budget. It's the money for this ongoing budget right now.
But I would, if I, right now, if I do not move anything into his budget, say he goes and spends forty-two thousand dollars on a car, it's gonna be over budget. So I literally have to, would have to move it either, move it from the general fund, like, the five-one-zero-zero, over to his department. If I do not move that to his department's appropriations line, then he's gonna be over budget.
Right, and that's the reason why he's asking if you're gonna move it into his.
That's what he's asking for, and I can do that, and I don't see that it's ever been done that way before, I don't.
Tell the sheriff's department that if they have a specific request for reapplication within this year's budget, submit it and it will go to the commission for approval.
And that is kind of how I, I have, I already said, it's something specific. And he's, and, and Lane has, a couple of different times, has sent me an email, and he did for this A and E report. He said, can we get that moved over to the appropriations for, for the, for this, this month's A and E report? I said, no, I can't, I can't do that, I mean, I don't know how it's been done before, I don't see where it's been done before, and I don't.
That would be spending money that you don't know whether or not you're gonna need if it's happening here.
And, and that's what he's, and he's saying, we're trying to figure out how much we have left to spend for the year.
They're trying to spend all their money.
And I told you that, but he's not even, I mean, he's riding on track with his budgets. So he's got, maybe he's got something specific in mind, but I'm just saying, my suggestion is that you find out what that subject is.
I agree with you, Jesse, if they got something that he brings to us, if not, at the end of the fiscal year, the money will get moved over. You know, they'll get their money.
So, so what is the county's power from those officers that we're talking about? Does anybody have an idea, I mean, hundreds of thousands of dollars?
Seventy, yeah, seventy-four thousand a year.
At the, the first year was the expensive year, it's two hundred thousand, two hundred twenty thousand.
And that's by cars too, right?
By people's husband, by.
That's a draw on the cars.
The car, I spoke with the police chief in Ranburn.
I thank you.
And, um.
He's shooting with the rainbow.
The cars is, was my big issue with him. I'm like, they're there guarding the schools, why are we giving them a car? And he said, well, cause by leaving for a traffic stop, that's what happened, it was a traffic stop. I said, well, who the hell is guarding the school? You know, and that was the answer, right? And I said, well, who else is, who else expresses the same need? He said, well, let's give John two new deputies, you know? Like, I thought we was guarding the school, we're not hiring deputies. So there's questions we need to answer.
Next, I don't use it when school's out, but when school out eight, nine weeks, something like that.
Yeah, all right, you threw.
Okay.
You don't share the fact.
Okay, here's a way that we can start getting, um.
You thought you were gonna.
Our agenda early, yeah, a couple of days early, because I can't, you know, I get it, and I can't even pull it up.
Well, now that we have a, a team, I'm taking over and have, I mean, I know it was, I know it was late this time, I know it was, there's no doubt, but it was Sunday morning and I'm sitting at my desk writing up resolutions till lunchtime, and it took that long to write all those resolutions up? I mean, that's, you look at those long resolutions.
This month had a lot of resolutions, but we actually passed a resolution, I think we're supposed to get them on Thursday.
You know, especially to get them after our work. That's a tough, that's a tough one, even with, even with a team here to, to work on this stuff, that's a tough call to get all the. It's not just about sitting down and typing, I mean, I could type something up that looks like this, that wouldn't make any sense in about twenty minutes, but.
If we could get.
To get all the information, you have to gather to even write those resolutions is.
If we could get them out, so we could ask questions.
Week, yeah, you know.
I thought we had about four, five, and this is.
I mean, we had more on the business this week, I mean, this month, than we normally have two months.
It, it, it took me probably four or five hours to write up all these resolutions, and, you know, the article one I didn't have to write out, obviously, the, the rest of them I didn't have to write up, but, um, I, I can say that, you know, if we have all, we have all Wednesday, Thursday, it's probably more than enough, not by afternoon, I'm not gonna promise you that we got a press one morning.
It's just, you know, I got questions when you call, and I hate to, you know, because I can't, like, get my emails at half past nine.
Okay.
Can you wipe out on the pantheon now?
Do you have anything for Lee?
Okay, you threw this then, you're right.
I can throw.
All right, county senator is not here, and he did not give me anything other than they lost today and they can't suck. Uh, county attorney, what you got?
Very little, nothing specific from tonight, but an issue with the revenue commissioner's office. Y'all will remember Fred's stores declared bankruptcy, and they owed some back taxes. Uh, we filed a claim on behalf of the revenue commissioner, uh, got a letter back late last week, and I sent it to, uh, uh, the revenue commissioner that the bankruptcy court has zeroed out all those claims for unsecured taxes across, you know, hundreds of different filers. So we will not be getting those tax amounts. So if you see those line items for friends get zeroed out on unexpected revenues, that's the reason they were discharged from the bankruptcy. Just want you to know, and this is true this budget time.
They didn't know what they were doing, but that, who's responsible for the property tax?
It's, these are the unsecured taxes, not property taxes.
Okay.
Owners should be responsible for property taxes.
Okay.
Cause all that sales tax and stuff like that.
Okay, so we're screwed on that too. We can write off our taxes, can't we? All right, so, yeah, old business, old convenience, place some discussion from commissioners, you already have your time?
Yes, uh, Oldwell School out there, I looked it up, I know there, it says, Oldwell School. Terry tells me that, uh, a guy told him that there's four people that that building was left to, it's another Oldwell School out there, that and that. Well, you know, we've been spending money on that thing over the years, we're, you know, doing ramp repairs, electrical breakers. Uh, but now, the storm come through the other day, it just lifted the roof up, uh, to repair its fourth aisle, new roof was twenty-two thousand. Uh, I wouldn't get twenty-two thousand for it, it is what it is. What, first of all, we got election coming, and, uh, and that's where they go.
About five years ago, I talked to Holman Harris out there, and he is, he's passed away last year or so. He told me that there was like a five-member board that that was left to, and they were in charge of it, but the commission was to keep it up, but then I asked Ryan about it, and I hadn't seen any paperwork since then. I would need to see some of that information.
Well, and, uh, you know, I mean, it was just one of the buildings, but it's another one that's not even on our engine. Uh, I had listened to it today, and so, you know, if I got somebody there calling up top of the building, it's a private building, it's a county employee.
And get what one is spent.
Well, I, you know, Ryan and Steve told me, I mean, I, I just took for granted that it's our building, and then when, uh,
Ryan had told me.
We start talking about twenty-two thousand dollars, I'm not sure that we, we need to have that.
Uh, Mr. Harris had told me that, he said he was the last living member of that board, and he's no longer with us, so. What's your address in that board?
I have one more thing to add to that already. County risk services are gonna be here next month to do our checking billings and all that, I should. Obviously.
You don't know anything about that, do you?
They're gonna, they're gonna do our workers' comp and all that, but they do check the liability and things that are.
You, you got, you should be in there, listen for something. Mr. Harris had told me that, it was, I think it was about five years ago.
It's for Route Four.
Before I ran the last time, he kid meets.
Oh, oh, well. I would go down and pull the bees, but, I mean, this is why, I just, I, I just found out, touched the roof, it sucked off of it, and.
We get Lisa to have them send a copy of the deed up here, I mean, pretty good, you know? Ryan, not Ryan, you just picked up.
But spend that kind of money, that's a lot of money, I don't want to be responsible for spending camera money on private property. We shouldn't be spending any money on liabilities, but.
Who would they, who would they name if they're there?
There's a church right across the road that I don't have.
What is it, um?
I don't know, never been in.
Is that Uncle?
Yeah.
Uncle George Cross Road, he's.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Yeah, I don't think they're really up here, I'm not sure, that's all.
I suppose nothing in that area. It's all about.
Yeah.
The door in there, after the church?
I'm sure it's missing, yeah.
Well, they said, they said they have to wake him up and get him out, get his grandfather, which is against the building.
I was told by a police officer, let him miss it, that's all.
I know, they said they have to wake him up.
Yeah. Uh, you got something else?
No, I'm good.
Uh, go ahead, we're here.
County risk services will be here August eleventh, I don't think everybody heard that, but they'll, county risk services, they'll be out. Um, August eleventh is the plan right now, I have, um, emailed with Crystal and Lee because they will want to talk to them, and, um, no answer, so. That's what it's scheduled for, is August eleventh, ten o'clock, they will come here, talk to us, talk in the ground about workers' comp issues and any, anything they need for us to know and question us and that kind of thing. They'll get lunch, and then they will start visiting properties that the county has.
Is that, is that the committee or something?
Uh, workers' comp.
Oh, workers' comp.
It's all decided.
The last time they had one of us to go with them, is that what we're making?
Yeah, we really need that, and I don't know if you normally do that, but I was, or figured.
Maybe Tuesday's what we want.
Obviously.
I'll get with, I'll get with Fred because I just want to go through and, and take care of some issues. You know, last time they rode us up on that ground, we ain't fixed that yet.
But you won't leave.
You'll be back for that. You'll be back for that.
No, I'll, I can go over with Fred if they're gonna be here. When are they coming next week?
August eleventh.
Yeah, I'll still be here, I don't think. Oh, obviously, I'll be, so we're best.
Be gonna be there, then you bigger than me.
Yeah, I'm not gonna be here. I'll get with Fred if there's somebody that only tried it before, they go one or two.
They said they're gonna check on anything they had written out before.
Yeah, no, we ain't fixed the chips, so I'm much better. We fixed the buns, but we didn't fix that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't see that, it's not.
Ready each one of our convenience center to our internal contact. And, um, and two of those.
A random convenience center this morning, I'm thinking.
That all the, they don't.
On our next, put it up aside over, I don't know, so, I don't think it'll sell it, I mean, all right, that's it.
That's it.
All right, you got anything, old business, so have you anything, no more discussing, like motion with your?
My motion with John.
Sorry.
Good, you good? You good, you good?
Yeah, no, it's time.